... to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, the Victorville Water District, and the Victorville Housing Trust. May we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Kennedy?
Here.
Councilmember McEckernan?
Here.
Councilmember Negretti's absence is noted. Mayor Protem Cox?
Here.
Mayor Garcia?
Since we do not have a closed session this evening, we do not have any announcements by our city attorney, so we move on to the invocation and Pledge of Allegiance. The invocation will be delivered by Associate Minister Bessie Cox of Burning Bush Church, and the Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Police Chief Sam Misha. Please stand.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for another city council meeting. Heavenly Father, we ask that you touch each and every council member that's represented here this evening, being their decision-making, oh God. We ask that you touch each and every family also that's represented here at this council meeting. Oh God, we just thank you right now. As they're here at this meeting, we ask that you bless their homes and their families, oh God. And not only them, God, but bless the firefighters and the police officers and our military women and men, Lord. We just thank you right now in the name of Jesus. For we know that you are here, and we know that decisions will be made, and we ask that you be in the decisions that are made at this meeting, Father. Let this be a positive meeting this evening. We just thank you right now, and we bless you in the name of Jesus. Amen.
See American flag? Place your right hand over your heart. Ready to begin.
... to the light of the United States of America and to the people who worship it.
I keep forgetting there's a comma after one nation.
This evening, we do not have any presentations. Also, we do not have any appeal hearings or public hearings. So we move on to consent counter. And the consent counter, items C1 through C7 can be approved with one motion unless there is an item that needs to be pulled for discussion. Yes, sir?
With approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McEckernan, second by Mr. Cox. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed. Motion carries with Mr. Negretti absent.
Now we move on to written communications. Item D1, the annual financial report. Madam Clerk, will you please read the recommendation?
The recommendation is that the city council and Board of Directors receive and file the City of Victorville Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, the Victorville Water District Financial Statements and Supplementary Information dated June 30, 2015, SCLAA Financial Statements and Supplementary Information dated June 30, 2015, SCLRA Financial Statement, and the City of Victorville Single Audit Report on Federal Awards dated June 30, 2015.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, we do have Jennifer Farr with Davis Farr, the firm that performed the audit here, to give a brief presentation. And I don't know if Councilmember Kennedy, the auditor, had any comments ahead of time or if you'd like to wait.
No, I'd like to thank our new firm, although most of them came from our former firm, but pleased with the job they did. Thank you very much for bringing us a timely product.
Yes, thank you very much. Excellent job.
I'm waiting for the presentation to come up.
Waiting for Brendan.
There you go. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. Thank you for having me here tonight to go over the audited financial statements for the City of Victorville. We have issued an unmodified audit opinion, which is the highest level of audit opinion that you can receive on your financial statements. It indicates that the numbers in the financial statements and the disclosures are materially accurate. We dated that opinion on February 2nd of 2016. And included in the audit opinion are some items for the reader to note that are in a section called Emphasis of Matters. There are certain times when we include additional information in the audit opinion to alert the reader about important things and important footnotes that they should look at. So this year, in that emphasis of a matter, the biggest, most significant thing that is happening in your financial statements this year is the implementation of the new pension standard. So now, for the first time, you're recording a pension liability on your financial statements, and I'll get into that in a little bit, little more detail. The emphasis of matter also points out that there are prior period adjustments that can be summarized in footnote 23. We have the issue of the going concern on the airport with additional information on footnote 20. That's a repeat from the prior year. Nothing really has changed there on that issue. And also, the pending impact of the SEC litigation in footnote 19 includes some more information. So it's just to alert the reader about important things that are going on. So GESB 68 implementation, again, a very big deal for you and all government agencies across the United States. This information has previously been included in a financial statement footnote, and I wanted to point out that absolutely nothing has changed about your benefit plan. The only thing that's changed is the accounting standard that now requires that it be presented in a different manner on your financial statements. So at June 30, 2015, the net pension liability is 35.5 million. And your pension plan is about 80 percent funded. I wanted to point out that that is actually a fairly high percentage in comparison to your peers. I was at a council meeting yesterday, and they were in the 50s. So I've seen ranges from the 50s to the 80s. I haven't seen anything outside the 80 percent range. In total, for CalPERS, the most recent information that they have out for all public agencies that participate in the CalPERS plan is 77 percent. So you're actually more funded than even the average or the total CalPERS plan. You'll see in the financial statements a couple new categories called deferred inflows and deferred outflows of resources. Those help account for some of those differences between actuarial assumptions and actual results related to those pension calculations. There's a great footnote on notes 12 and 13, a number of additional pages of information on your pension plan that should include everything you ever wanted to know about your plan. And now, right now, you have one year presented, but eventually you will have 10 years of trend information presented on your pension plan that'll cover the pension contributions and also that funded percentage and the pension liability amount. Going over just a couple of financial statement highlights. This chart is from the front of the financial statement, so it's all of the funds combined on a full-accrual basis, and it includes all of the capital assets and all of the debt of the organization. So the assets, when you put all the funds together, declined by about 14.3 million from the prior year. The biggest change is in capital assets, and that's simply depreciation expense exceeding new capital investments during the year. On the liability side, you can see liabilities increased by 44.7 million compared to the prior year. Now, 35.5 million of that is related to the pension obligations. So the bulk of that is related to the pension obligations. On the income statement side, the total revenues were less than expenditures by close to $15 million, if you see that 14,992 number at the bottom. However, if you take out some of those non-cash items, such as the depreciation expense of 37 million, and then you adjust it for some of the bond payments, if you take those, some of those non-cash items out, the net effect is actually 18.5 million. And the comparison here is from the current year to the prior year, so you can see it's an improvement from the prior year as well. The general fund of the city is obviously a very important fund for you to pay attention to. It's your general operating resources of the city. This is a chart of the revenues, current year compared to prior year. You can see that the current year revenues of 51 million are approximately 1.3 million higher than the prior year revenues. And the biggest change is in that tax, that top line taxes and assessments, and is primarily due to increases in both property taxes and sales taxes during the year. And the other revenues stayed fairly consistent. The intergovernmental line is going to change from year to year. It has to do with different grants that you're receiving in the general fund. On the expenditures for the general fund, you can see that the total general fund expenditures for the current year were 52.7 million compared to 49.6 in the prior year, so a little more than a $3 million increase. This is primarily due to increased legal fees and also increases in the public safety contract cost over the prior year. So in total, the general fund equity for a fiscal year ended June 30, 2015, declined by 1.3 million. And that brings the equity balance down in the general fund to about 3.4 million. So that number, when you compare that 3.4 million to the total expenditures in the general fund, it's a very small reserve that you're working with in the general fund right now. And I'm sure that's not a, not new news to you. So in conclusion, I did want to let you know that we met with the Audit Committee on February 2nd and management to go over a few internal control recommendations in detail and to go over the audit results in detail in the financial statements. I did want to mention that the accounting records were in excellent shape. As Councilmember Kennedy mentioned, the same engagement team that worked for a prior firm in the prior year made comments to me about how the financial statement condition was improved from the prior year. So it was a cleaner audit, an easier audit from the prior year. We found staff was very prepared, very professional when we worked with them, and we do appreciate staff time. It's not an easy task to be audited, and we do a thorough job, and just wanted to comment on staff's efforts in the process. And with that, that's all the prepared comments I have about the audit process and the financial statements. I'm more than happy to answer any questions that you have.
Jennifer, one of the interesting things in that pension disclosure is the, I can't remember the title of it, but where it looks at the liability at three different rates, earnings rates of PERS. And I think the liability that we are showing now is based on an earnings rate of, is it seven and a half?
Seven and a half percent, correct.
And the calculation at six and a half and at eight and a half produced a lot of different results, but... My concern is that that real pension liability could be substantially more. I don't know who's getting seven and a half percent on their investments right now, but PERS apparently is, or at least that's what they're using to project the liability.
Right. At seven, at six and a half percent, that liability would be $49 million.
If they're off by one percentage point, that liability goes up, what, 14 million?
Significant balance, yes.
Yeah, so...
Any other questions?
Do want to thank staff for excellent job, considering some of the challenges they've had in years past. Great job.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
For the, for the city manager, is this now going to be posted on our website so that anyone can look at it?
Yes, it will.
Yes, receiving files, so there's no action required.
There's no action required.
I don't know if there's an action required. I think there is an action to simply receive and file. It's not approving it.
No, it's a receiving file. And Kennedy to make the motion, since he's been mostly involved?
I will. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Ms. Garcia. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed. Motion carries with Mr. Negretti absent.
Now we move on to item D2, CalPERS medical benefits.
You know, Madam Mayor, one thing I do want to add, and this is probably two years down the road, Jennifer, if I'm not mistaken. One of our important liabilities that we still haven't recorded is the post-employment benefits liability, which is basically health insurance for employees for the rest of their lives. That one's not on the books yet. This was a $35 million hit to our net assets when we recorded it, and when that one gets recorded, it'll hit again. That's also a pretty big number. Don't know exactly how big, but we'll feel it. But that's coming, I think, two years away?
18.
Three years.
We better prepare for that one. Okay, we move on to D2, CalPERS medical benefits. Madam Clerk, will you please read the recommendation?
Recommendation is that the city council adopt Resolution Number 16-009, electing to be subject to the Public Employees Medical and Hospital Care Act at unequal amounts for employees and annuitants with respect to a recognized employee organization.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, just a quick comment on this. Our benefits committee got together again. As you recall, we had some pretty severe rate increases proposed last year, so they got to work on it early. This time, our staff's best estimate is that one of our current providers probably will not even submit a bid because of the amount of change that occurred last year with the plan. They raised our rates 10 percent after the fact. And that one of our other providers is very likely to have a pretty severe rate increase because they gained so many new employees into their plan. So what staff's proposal is to join CalPERS Health, which would, we believe, stabilize those rates. Rates will continue to go up so long as doctors continue to charge what doctors charge and everyone continues to charge what they charge. And Obamacare is still a big question mark as to who's paying for what. But we believe that this will, being part of the larger pool, will save us money in the long run and stabilize it. There was one question that came up in an agenda briefing with Mayor, Mayor Protem, that I did get the answer to, but I had not shared it, so I wanted to go over that quickly. The, part of the title of the resolution is unequal amounts for employees and annuitants. What that means is that employees receive a certain amount, it's $750 per month, towards these health plans. Annuitants, or retirees, receive an amount based on their years of service. The requirement from PERS is that retirees have access to health care. So under this plan, current and new retirees would have $1 paid by the city towards their health plan, as required by PERS, a minimum amount. However, they would be reimbursed based on the schedule that is part of our annual resolution. And it's based on years of service. It goes from 25 percent after, I believe it's eight years, Josie? Eight years? And then after several more years, it goes to 50 percent coverage, then 75, and ultimately, at I believe 20 or 25 years, you get to 100 percent coverage, meaning those retirees would get 100 percent of a single person medical care cost, similar to the current employee benefits. So that's what the, the meaning of unequal amounts for employees and annuitants was.
Couple of questions. First of all, there's a, there's a very, very, very good reputation of this insurance. I know a lot of agencies have belonged to it for some time. In the past, however, a lot of reasons why some public agencies did not join. I'm sure that the committee, whoever the committee is, have looked at this. Years ago, when I looked at it, it's probably changed, it was before what they call now Obamacare and et cetera, et cetera. Was the ongoing requirement to pay full insurance for the employee and spouse after retirement. And I was always in favor of having it available, but, and our own, our own insurance pays up to a certain amount. Times that goes up, some agencies that do require in fact that, time it that that continue. But that, it covers the employees, but employees have to pay depending upon how many years of service. But in many instances, the employee has to pay for the spouse if they want the spouse to cover it. I don't know what has happened in the last four, five years that's occurred, and all the promises that did not come to pass. But I also want to see an absolute requirement that this ceases at five, but I don't see it, because of the Medicare requirements. And I know that was a problem some years ago that agencies had with PERS because it didn't stop. And employees have gotten hurt because of the requirement, if you don't sign up for Medicare when you're 65, there are penalties, severe penalties. Penalties continue. And two, three years later, the employees signed up because of the benefits they weren't getting, and they had to pay. I want to make sure that all these things are covered. I would, I sure hope to, sure hope that we don't buy into something without having all of that understood. And I see nothing but a resolution. I don't know if that's understood or not. I'd like to have some more information, if it's possible. I assume that it's important because we decrease according to this. Switching to CalPERS will result in a decrease in premiums for approximately 50 percent of the employees. Well, approximately 50 percent of our employees will see a decrease in premiums. The rest of our employees will see an increase between 1 and 45 percent, depending upon the medical plan. And I'm wondering if employees have been told this, which ones know, which of the employees know that their contribution will increase by 45 percent? I just asked a few employees and didn't find any that knew that. So I think there's some more information that's needed.
Madam Mayor, if I, if I might, and I would ask Doug or Bill to help out in this. Obviously, I understand this probably better than anybody up here, but I live and breathe this industry. All, all this is looking to do is provide us with an option through CalPERS, and that option will come back before the council for approval. This is not approving to go with CalPERS. Am I correct?
We are requesting approval to go, to enroll with CalPERS.
But you don't even know the price yet.
We, we have the prices attached to the agenda. We have the premiums for the next six months. They, they have a fiscal year enrollment, I'm sorry, a calendar year enrollment.
So you're asking us to approve something before you even know the renewal of the existing companies?
We are expecting...
No, 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 not what you're expecting. I want to know what the renewals are for the expect, the current companies.
We don't have renewal rates yet.
So you're asking us to approve something before you know that? That's not normal.
Just to try to help with that, the need for it to go is a timeline based on CalPERS. We're kind of stuck with an option, and that's why we went to our committee. At this point, if we go into negotiating with the, the current providers, we run out of time to go to this program. And whatever we get at this point, where we basically have everybody in Kaiser now, and they can pass on the two years that they did not pass on increases to us, we are going to have to live with. For the best that we can negotiate, and we can do that. This is an option based on any, on only what we expect at this point, which is a huge hike from our current providers. And as Doug said, non-service from one provider. The benefit of this is it's a larger pool. There are millions in it, and so therefore it gives us better bargaining power. But we've looked into it as much as we can up to this point. If you would like, as I'm hearing, more information to satisfy your questions, if you would like a printout of 300 people, what plans they're in now and how much it costs them and how much it's going to cost them, we can produce that also. The hard question is this: will they change plans? Because this offers several plans. So we won't be comparing apples to apples. Somebody may go up in their current plan depending on their family structure if they're Kaiser now and they go to CalPERS Kaiser. If they stay with us, it'll also go up. We're guessing even more. But with this plan, it offers other plans within that, and they can switch within CalPERS. So they have a selection of maybe half a dozen plans rather than limited to the two plans we currently offer, which is soon to become one. So we're kind of in a time crunch. And are we coming to you for the approval to submit the resolutions? Yes. Once we go forward, then we're bound with us. If we do not go forward with it, and that's why we're coming before the budget, their timeline is different, as Josie stated. So we, but if we don't go forward with it, we're stuck with what we get. And we will be coming back to you with increases, rate increases. We just don't know the amount yet. If we can have guidance instead of an approval on how to, you know, how to decide between the two, that would be fine, too. But right now, we, we only have what we have, and we won't have what we get in negotiation until we go through the next several months of negotiation.
All right, Bill, just to be clear, I'm, I'm, I'm happy with the fact that the committee is looking into this. But to tie our hands right now doesn't make any sense. Is CalPERS requiring that we tie our hands behind our back and say, "We're just going to take whatever you give us"?
It's a complete, separate enrollment process, and they need a few months to prepare for July 1st.
CalPERS does this with multiple agencies across the state. They don't need a couple months. I mean, quite frankly, we should be able to get our renewal compared to theirs, and then at that point, be able to make a decision. I, I completely disagree with that.
What was the deadline that they gave us?
March 1st.
March 1st. It's a deadline they gave us. And we can go back after tonight, and we can ask for an extension, and we can try to round up the numbers. I don't know how much negotiating we'll do. As you know, the, the providers negotiate hard up until the end, and we're usually right at a budget approval before we get accurate numbers, you know what I mean, from them? Somewhere in the middle, where even if we get an extension, we're going to have to stop and say, "This is as far as we can go, and this is the time that we have, and we need to make a change." If you want us to proceed like that, the only risk is if, if, if we don't switch, and if we get blocked, or we miss their deadline, or they uphold a deadline, we will have to live with what we get, including the requirement to provide to some people by law that our providers won't provide for, which is what, what, what Doug referenced. And that's the scary part, because I'm not even sure how you do that or how much it costs for people that our current providers won't provide for, and no one will, no one will, will bid on it.
And, okay, so from, from my perspective, I'm, I'm fine with that. I think if we were given a month, I think that would be appropriate, and here's why. Your, the, the recommendation to go with CalPERS doesn't compare, in essence, apples to apples. And I get that you're not going to be able to compare apples to apples. But let's say you can get as close as you possibly can. What is the percentage increase? You're telling me that if we stayed in our current plans, that we might be looking at an increase of 45-plus percent? And, and I wouldn't argue that. Quite frankly, I, having been involved with you and understanding what we have done in the past, that's, that's natural. And we don't want to see that passed on to our employees. And even if everyone went to Kaiser tomorrow, we know that there's going to be increase there. But, but my question is, is that there's no projected increase based upon what their benefits are today if they went over to CalPERS and chose a like plan? CalPERS offers a lot of different plans, and to, from my perspective, I think that's a great thing for our employees, that gives them the opportunity of choice. So they ought to be able to have that. But what I want to know is if they chose the same plan that they are on today or as like plan that they are on today in CalPERS, what is the percentage of increase? We, if we can't know that, if we have no idea of that, it's very difficult for us up here to make a decision based upon just saying it's some arbitrary number between 1 percent and 45 percent. one percent and forty-five percent.
If, as I stated, they gave us that deadline, we will go back and we can ask for an extension. We can bring you more specifics based upon what options the employees would have. One of the reason for the increase in those other employees is there's going to be an increase anyway. We don't know if it's less than we're currently going to have or not. There's a small percentage of that that's currently bundled in the one kid versus two or more kids package where people with one kid are paying a little higher now in our plan, people with two are getting a little bit break. In this, they separate them out. So, the one kid will get a discounted rate and will probably be a savings or the same. The two kids will pay their, 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 what would be appropriate share under most plans, a little bit more. That's where, when we're questioned about who, the ones that we know that would pay higher, apple for apple, apples to apples, are the ones that are in that group that are right now getting a benefit of being bundled in our current plan. But that's all we know. We can go back and make sure that's all. We can also look like we, we only compared Kaiser people now to Kaiser and CalPERS. Like I said, there's other options. And we can take a look at that and say, "Well, it ranges from this much more to that much more if they stay with Kaiser." And we can bring some spreadsheets and bring some more information and hopefully it's enough to, as well as, as well as answer Councilman Cox's questions, um, in the process. And we can go back and we can ask for an extension. We just, we wouldn't even be coming at this point. We planned to come at budget when we started looking into it, you know, and roll it together so there can be more discussion and we'd have more information. However, we were presented with a deadline from CalPERS. And with CalPERS, and you know, sometimes it's just, this is not the real deadline, but sometimes it's, there's no discussion once they, once they make a statement. So, we, we wanted to bring it in a timely manner just in case.
Okay, so a couple of comments to, to that point. And then, yes, I think it would be appropriate if, uh, they will allow for an extension for you to bring it back to us in a month. CalPERS tends to do these things, so us getting put between a rock and a hard place is where we're at tonight. I don't want to make a decision tonight based upon facts that I have no idea of what they are. One percent to forty-five percent is such a huge range and it doesn't tell me anything. And you don't even know what our increases are going to be from Kaiser or Aetna. Or if, even though you're assuming Aetna's saying they won't even provide us with an option, which from my perspective, I agree with you, uh, one hundred percent, I know uh, that they won't provide us with that option. But who's, who's to say? Maybe there's someone else out there. Uh, my point, my point is, is that I applaud you and the committee for, for looking at this. Um, what frustrates me is that we're being put in this position to just make a decision tonight without the facts. Um, we're being told it's between one and forty-five percent. We don't know exactly what that number is going to be. Uh, we don't even know if Aetna is willing to, you know, offer renewal. We don't know where Kaiser's going to be on their renewal. Um, and, and, uh, we don't know where our employees are going to choose plans within the CalPERS options.
Right.
I think all those things come into play and it's very difficult, uh, from my perspective to make a decision based upon those things. Uh, I'd like about another thirty days if we can get it. Um, and then if we can't, I'd like to know if CalPERS will allow us, assuming that we choose to just renew where we're at, um, to look at a January first renewal date and move to that date. Because I, in many cases, have moved groups to a different renewal date.
Halfway through, or it'd be halfway through our term of our new one. Yeah, we'll look at both those options. And if you do move tonight, I would though request a continuation for two weeks. And if, if they give us longer, we'll continue it automatically for two weeks to get you more information, just in case they give us a shorter drop dead deadline.
Uh, quick, sorry, go ahead.
Two questions. Do I understand this proposal correctly that CalPERS will give our employees probably the greatest number of options and selections that we're likely to find?
Anywhere.
Any, anywhere?
Yes.
Okay. Um, and, and that would mean both price and benefits? The comment, I mean, they could select among different plans to get the one that they think price-wise in terms of benefits suits them best?
Should be, and should be at the best prices because of their bargaining strength.
Okay. Second question is, will you know more thirty days from now about our renewal rates than you know tonight?
We, we, you know, they come on strong. They come on strong for months and they back down and back down and then they say they'll give you a break at the end. So, if we checked around right now, they would look ridiculous. You, you know, we would see ridiculous rates.
Have you actually received the renewal yet?
Oh, I can tell you this. I can tell you this. What we won't know is that. We do know one thing today, which is the best we can from Kaiser. The last two years, they did not say they waived the Obama increase. They said they postponed them. During those two years, they got from, they went from a minority of our employees to the overwhelming majority. Everyone who actually can almost enroll in it is in Kaiser now. Now, they have the power to go forward and that's our fear. So, that much we know. They did not ever, they made it clear they were not waiving any of those, those fees or increases. They were postponing them is what they continuously told us. So, that tells us something there. We can go to the bargaining table and we can send things out. It'll be more unrealistic than what we're, we're seeing today with a large increase because we're starting on month one of bargaining. So, they're going to say, they're going to give us a twenty percent, a thirty percent increase.
But, but Bill, I think to his point, and I, I realize that you can, you can negotiate back and forth on whatever the renewal is. Do you have, actually have the renewal in front of you at this point?
Information, no.
Okay, so when do you expect to have that?
We would be doing that instead of this if this wasn't going forward.
No, the insurance companies have to offer it to you anyway. So, when is Aetna and Kaiser going to provide you with the renewal? I mean, they, they have to provide you with a letter that says, "Here's, here's your renewal, here's the percentage increase you're going to see." They have to do that. They don't have an option there. That's required through the Affordable Care Act.
Beginning of April. She's stating beginning of April. I know it's closer to when we come into budget meetings.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's too long. They need to provide it to you before then. They already know what they're going to, they already know what they're going to be increasing the rate at.
Totally agree.
Just get it from them. Because from my perspective and for the whole council's purpose, um, if you had that in front of us tonight, it'd be easy. I would just say go with CalPERS.
It would have been easy.
Because I, I know that that's likely what we're going to tell you to do.
It would have been easier for us.
But I want the renewal from Aetna and Kaiser to back that up.
We can go, we can go one more, more time at both CalPERS and both our current providers. That's not a problem. Um, and try to get what we can. We tried to get as much as we can before we moved forward with this. And it was asked who the committee was. The committee were volunteer, were representatives from each department in the city. They weren't selected by any of us. They were, um, they volunteered and I believe the city manager appointed them as a committee. And, and as you know, I think, uh, you were involved last year. I know you were involved last year. They've, they've, they've now overseen this two years in a row. Um, did they have more information than you at that time? No, but they have their own experience and they, they, they knew where they fit in and what had happened before and what was coming. Um, but we would, we will get you as much information as we can. And that's why I would, I would hope that we don't go thirty days in case they give us three weeks or two weeks, that we could just, we can put a request for continuance if they give us a longer period next meeting and follow up the following meeting with more information. But we can play hardball. We can go back to the current, but it's really awkward because the current provider is under this also. So, I don't know how effective that'll be, but we can go and say, "Look, we're about to switch. We got one chance and we're not going to negotiate what's the lowest rate you'll give us. We need something now. We need it immediately." Or we're moving on to another plan and see what we get. Because we don't have much to lose at this point and, and I understand you guys, you guys need information. But we just didn't want to be coming before you in three months and be asked, "Why didn't you look into something else?" Are, you know, three hundred people, their plans just doubled. So, you understand our dilemma and we understand yours. We're in it together. We can go back to both sides on the other end and figure something out and bring you more information.
And, and from my perspective, if we need to make a decision before thirty days, I'm fine with that. I just, i- if we can get that, I think it'd be appropriate. If it needs to happen before then, I'm fine with that as well. I just think that we should have, um, the current renewals in front of us along with what CalPERS, uh, you know, proposal is to go forward.
Absolutely.
And if, for whatever reason, there needs to be a, a difference in time as to when we put CalPERS into place, again, like I said earlier, I know I've been able to do this in the past, you can move, uh, you know, a group's renewal date. So, I mean, I know we like to go with our fiscal year, Doug, but in essence, most employers, uh, even if they're not on their fiscal year, go calendar year. Majority of all accounts that we handle renew.
Well, and that's what this will turn into. They're going six months and then it'll be a calendar year from there on in.
So, then, so that's even an option right now, as you say?
But, but, well, that, you're absolutely correct. It's, the, the option isn't with our current providers that we can just sign up for six months and then quit them if, if we go that route. So, we'd have a six month, we'd either have a six month with no insurance or potentially a six month overhang where we can't get out of it halfway through. So, we'd have to, we'd have to negotiate that also. I'm not saying it can't. It'd just complicate things. I would rather get you all of the information so that we all know and are, and are confident in what we're doing and where we're going and we're all in it together and we move forward whether it's this way or the other way. So, we will scrap together and grab as much as we can and tell them you have one last chance. We need numbers. Give us whatever you can. See how, see how low we can get on, on both sides.
Um, when I turn the page, you anticipate Aetna dropping the city since the last two years, they lost a large percentage. I think that's probably true. Um, then you point out Kaiser has the enrollment majority. We're anticipating a significant increase. I thought maybe we had a letter making a projection, but we apparently have received nothing. Twice then, we're contacting insurance carriers for early retiree population. Retirees would no longer be restricted to remain in California in order to contend the medical benefits. Um, I don't know, we have a couple hundred people going to early retire. This sounds like it's a boon to the retirees, but I'm not sure what it does to the current employees, um, which is really odd, I think, when I look at it. But the key is to get all the information and I want to see, um, what the best health plan there is for the employees and then what it's going to cost. CalPERS has a great, great, just a great reputation. And I would like to see as projected as good as possible what CalPERS is actually proposing. And I know in the past, it's been a problem with retirees that leave the state and then we have to make other provisions because they, the insurance doesn't work. I had thought that had got worked out or something, but that's still a problem?
Yeah, we offer a, a, a smaller cash payout.
And then maybe somewhere along the line, if this is going to be a continuing problem, somebody could offer some insight on why the employees will stay with the city until they retire and can't wait to get out of the state.
California.
Hope we treat them good enough that they want to consider this.
It's California.
I don't know that a majority are leaving the state, but we certainly have some that have and some that will.
Yeah.
Um, one thing that I wanted to comment on, I know staff can do this, might take a little bit more time, was for the future presentation when it's made, rather than having just a broad, you know, one percent to forty-five percent with half being less, what we can do, even though we don't know what e- each employee may choose, is we can go through employee by employee and give the cheapest option for them. And that at least gives you something to consider that's definitive, uh, rather than taking a guess at which plan they may or may not choose.
And that's what, and that's what we can do with spreadsheets and we can do our best. It will not cover the choices that they would make. It would not cover that, "Well, I would just put the kids on my spouse if that's the case, on, on the school insurance." There's a lot of changes out there that we can't predict, so it won't be the end all. We can give you the best of our guesstimate and, you know, across the board or even in categories of what the cost would be and how many people that would be affected. We can get you that information. We just couldn't necessarily compare it to what our current plan is because we don't know that until April. But we'll move ahead with that.
But Bill, you know what, well, going back, you know what our current plan is and where employees are at now. I guess my, my objective here is to compare where they're at now as to where they might go.
Oh, that one, yeah.
Based upon a similar plan and what the difference in price is there percentage-wise. That's what I'm looking for.
That's, and we've done some of that.
I'm not, because I, I realize that they may choose to go with some completely different plan. They may go from a thousand dollar deductible to three thousand dollar deductible. They might go from a ten dollar copay to a thirty dollar copay. I'm not asking you to tell me what the difference in those options would be.
Right.
I'm asking you to tell me if they're at a ten dollar copay or fifteen dollar copay and they went to a plan that was of, of a light copay, a light deductible, um, then what would be the difference in premiums?
And we have most of that information. That, that we can do. We compared them Kaiser to Kaiser for this, saying these would be the increases. We also compared today's cost to this plan's cost next year. What we didn't do and which we can definitely do is find, uh, less costly plans that fit them and compare them to those. It'll still be current versus future costs with this plan. Our struggle is trying to get a real number from the current Kaiser provider. But we're going to try to do that also to give you, like I said, apples to apples comparison. And so, all of that we can do. We were in a, we were in a real big time crunch when we came into this and we had a March first deadline getting this much into you. What we did do was we reviewed some of that basic stuff on spreadsheets and things spread around and everything. It wasn't time to figure out how best to package it and bring it to you and it wasn't complete. But we will gladly do that for you.
Two comments if I might. It looks like, I want to see what CalPERS offers, the dollars and the coverage. I was prepared to vote for this, but it looks like it's fairly binding. You know, we're in. We adopt this, staff takes it, we're in. Can we get out next year if we don't like it?
Uh, we could get out, um, but as, um, it's normally done in the industry, once you get out of a plan, you may not join for five years.
What?
You may not join back, um, after, until five years has passed.
If we decide to get out, we wouldn't want to join in five years. You know, if it turns out not to be, you know.
Absolutely. Yeah, we're, we're only locked in for the, the term that we sign up for, which would be a year. It would be the same as our current vendor.
Yeah, because I know some agencies have locked themselves up for five years.
Thirty.
What, thirty? No, okay, I'm sorry. Um, but I just wanted, that was the question. How long does this bind us to? And do you really know?
Yeah, well, if, if it's your pleasure, we'll be happy to see what we can round up in one week, whether we can make the two-week deadline. If not, we'll put in a request for continuance and we'll be back in, uh, two meetings from now, as long as we can get a contin, uh, an extension from them. If we can't, we'll be back and we'll hand over as much as we've got and we'll make a decision together. We're, we're good with that.
This is important for everyone. I'm available for a special meeting if need be, but we do have a meeting in two weeks, do we not?
Yes, March fifteenth would be the next meeting.
So, uh, I think that we should be willing to continue this and for two weeks with the intent that it's going to be continued for another two weeks unless they have the data by then. I hear Mr. Webb saying thirty days, and so...
Make your motion.
Uh, that's my motion.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Cox, second by Mr. McEckren. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed? Motion carries with Mr. Negretti absent.
And just as a point of information, I, many, many, many years ago, when I first started my, uh, public service, um, was in the CalPERS Health. And at that point, I think there was eighteen different options. And I recall that well over ninety percent of the employees picked the cheapest option based on monthly cost. There was not as much, um, you know, comparison of benefits and copays and things. It came down to what's the cheapest option that I have month to month and, and that's what was selected. So, I think that's, that's a good comparison.
Thank you. Okay, we move on to D three, semi-annual financial report. After the recommendation.
Recommendation is that the city council review and file the semi-annual financial report for the first and second quarter of fiscal year twenty sixteen.
So, move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Cox, second by Mr. Kennedy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Those opposed? None opposed. Motion carries with Mr. Negretti absent.
And another quick comment if I might. This item, this is the last time we intend to put this on written communications. I know when Councilmember Kennedy and then Councilmember Vias had asked for this type of information, Councilmember Kennedy pulled it off of the consent calendar several times. We put it on written on a fairly regular basis because we were going through some pretty tough financial times and there was a need to discuss it. But from this point on, we'll just simply put it on consent, so unless there's a reason to pull it off, it would just simply come to you as that.
Well, I'm hoping I will have time to get with Janelle and go through that, what's on our website and see just how satisfactory that is to me for just continuing available information.
Right. That, that is very good information. I suspect that appointment won't occur until sometime after the middle of April, probably.
Okay, we move on to D4, Beer and Wine Sales Review by Planning Commission. Madam Clerk, recommendation please?
This item is on for informational purposes. There is no recommendation.
Any discussion?
Yes. First of all, I think that our police chief makes the recommendation that he's almost forced to make, being in the line of work that he's in and considering the safety of everyone in this city. Talk about sale of minors, drug driving, drug sales, loitering, and on and on and on. We've taken a lot of steps to try to outlaw the one-ounce drinks of the hard liquor and so on. And I'm not, I'm, I would have expected this to be exactly as it came down. The oddity is that there was a large grocery store that provided beer, wine, and hard liquor at that intersection before it closed. And across the street, we have two service stations. I bet you that if you ask our police chief, do you recommend against allowing service stations, people to go in by liquor, he would say, he certainly would recommend against it. After all, driving is a major, major problem in the city. On the other hand, it's fact and it's there and the ordinance requires it. So, the grocery store can come in and sell large volumes, but a small establishment can't even sell beer and wine when they're selling food products. That just doesn't make any sense. I understand the planning commission playing safe. I understand, you know, I'm a good person. I vote for good people. Anything that's bad, no smoking, no drinking. When you get down to the logic of it, this doesn't make any sense to me. And they have to adhere to ABC guidelines. They cannot sell alcoholic beverages to juveniles. They cannot, we're not going to allow loitering. They're not going to be selling hard liquor. They're not going to be selling the one-ounce packets of liquor. They only requested, my discussion is that they only wanted to sell beer and wine. And I could even say restricted the amount of square foot related to the store square foot in order to ensure that it doesn't become primarily beer and wine. But anyway, you've received the recommendation of the planning commission. I applaud them for the time that they took. The recommendation is exactly as I expected, but I still think the reasonableness of it and the fairness of it requires that we amend the ordinance to allow, even if it's, it should be restricted to beer and wine. It should not be hard liquor. It should not be shelves of it. It should not take up 25% of the store. But there's nothing wrong with allowing this store because it's selling groceries. It's a smaller store to have beer and wine. It just doesn't make any sense to me. So, I've had my, I've spoken my piece.
Well, I have the same thing in as Mayor Proton. I also feel that it's unfair that they are not allowed to, to sell the beer and wine. And this is for information purposes only, so obviously we don't-
There was some kind of different direction from the council, staff's here, to make any changes or bring it back in a different manner, if that were the direction of the council. So, it's really up to the council if you want to make a change.
Did you want to?
Well, I don't, I want to hear from the rest of the council people. I'm not going to, I'm not, you know, if this is, if this is the, if the council agrees, so be it. That's, that's why we have five people here making the decision and not one. I am absolutely willing to, we are a team. We're a good team. And I absolutely will support the members of the council, but I'd like to hear from the council because I think this is a, I think it's a little dicey issue, but, and if it was a liquor store, no. If it was major square foot, no. With all the alcoholic beverages that can be sold, this seems like it's almost a different situation and requires some attention to the council, but maybe not. So, I'd like to hear from the rest of the council members.
Well, from my perspective, you know, I was more than willing to send this back to the planning commission. I, I thought that was at least appropriate based upon concerns of, of a few of the council members. But seeing what I've seen here based upon planning commission for one vote, as well as our, our captain of the Sheriff's Department, it just, it, it seems that it's, it's not appropriate. And it, what concerns me is that, you know, if we carve out this one particular location or and/or use, then that opens up a precedent that we could do that for any one location precedent or use. And, and I'm just going to revert back to my, my former position as chairman of the planning commission and being on the planning commission for nearly eight years. You have a planning commission. They're there for a reason. Obviously, we need to, to support them in their, in their decision-making process. We did give them the opportunity to review it to see if there was a, a reason to change it, but based upon not only their dialogue, their dissertation, but also the recommendation from our, our captain Sam Lucia, that we not do this. It just seems appropriate that we stay the course and go down that road. I agree. It may not be fair. It may not be appropriate, but at the end of the day, we have a, a planning commission for a reason and, and, and we do have staff for a reason. And so, from that perspective, I think that what's been recommended in this particular case is appropriate.
I, I want to respond. I didn't make a, I don't want an exception for this business. I, I would be very much opposed to that, but I am for making an exception to the ordinance that would allow the smaller stores to have a limited area for beer and wine, the whole intent. Because if it builds large enough square foot, they can sell all they want. So, it must be okay to sell beer and wine at this location. The only exception is the size. The size that was originally agreed upon by the planning commission and council is totally arbitrary. That's the only thing that I wanted them to look at. As for an exception just for this market, no. I don't believe in exceptions and I don't think we should start, but that wasn't the, that wasn't the reason for my request.
Just to be clear, the planning commission studied a change in the, in the code, not specifically for this, for a single market. It was obviously on the heels of the market that was denied their appeal, but it, this item wasn't specifically for that market. It was, as you say, Mr. Cox.
Kennedy's not going to weigh in on this, so I'm not going to make a motion to the city council to further consider it.
So, we accept the planning commission recommendation?
No votes to, uh, continue it further. We've, we've complied with everything that we could do and the decision has been made. The recommendation is made by the planning commission and it's just for information only, so.
Very well. So, there's no motion or?
Action required.
Okay, so we, we move on to D5, Economic Development 2015 Annual Report. Madam Clerk, recommendation?
This is a recommendation to review and file the report.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Mr. McEckren. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed. Motion carries with Mr. Negretti absent.
If I, if I might, I just would like to acknowledge Economic Development, Keith and Sophie. This report is exactly what we were looking for out of the strategic planning workshop and provides us with an overview of what they're doing to help attract business here to City Victorville. So, I applaud you, Keith, as well. I think the report tells us a lot. What it doesn't tell us is who you're actually talking to. I wish we could know that, but, so does, I'm sure, the press. But what's important is that you are having those meetings. You are making those connections. And one of the things that we all know when it comes to business attraction is that the contacts and the, the conversations that you have today generally don't come to fruition for three to five years later. So, I just applaud you and your department for doing what you're doing to help attract business to SCLA as well as City Victorville.
Madam Mayor and members of the council, if I might, this item was actually the request, the request is specific to trade show activity and we actually took that request to actually expand into this report to provide a lot more information about all that our marketing program does. And you may be aware that annually, we do have a marketing program that encompasses all of these aspects that we're reporting on. So, we took this as an opportunity to, to cause ourselves to be more accountable as to the results, if you will, the measurables to that marketing program. So, one of the things that we do intend on doing around this time in subsequent years is prepare a report similar to this so that we can at least share with you what has been done over the past years. In particular, I'd like to recognize, I think, the heavy lifting of the report. Of course, Sophie oversaw it, but Ms. Kalamar and Ms. Tracy Foster certainly did the heavy lifting and actually making this a very presentable report for you. Great report.
So, we move on to item D6, Award of Construction Contract to Borden Excavating in the Amount of $871,555.
I move for the award of the construction contract in the amount of $871,555 with the understanding that we will be reimbursed through Caltrans.
Madam Mayor, if I might, and members of the council, yeah, this project is resultant from the improvements that are being made at Stoddard Wells Road, D Street, and E Street. That construction project does affect underline, underground water lines that we do have. There's three particularly that have to be relocated to where the current depth of those water lines are not low enough, basically. So, this project is actually going to force realignment of three of those lines so that it's actually deeper in the ground and not impacted negatively by the construction at the interchange. You are correct to understand that about 90% of this budget is expected to be reimbursed from Caltrans. The remaining amount is for actually improvements that we're making as a supplement to help enhance our system.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Cox, second by Mr. McEckren. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed. Motion carries with Mr. Negretti absent.
Item D7, Award of Contract to David Evans and Associates, Inc., for Design Engineering Services for Water Capital Improvement Project, CIP Pumping Station, WID-1-WID-2 in the amount of $147,360. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
Recommendation is that the Victorville Water District Board award the service provider agreement in an amount not to exceed $147,360.
Don't move. Second.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Mr. Cox. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed. Motion carries with Mr. Negretti absent.
Item D8, Acceptance of Water Rate Study and Setting a Public Hearing for Proposed New Water Rates. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
Recommendation is that the Victorville Water District Board of Directors accept the water rate study, authorize district staff to mail Proposition 218 notices of proposed new water rates and set May 17, 2016, as the date for the public hearing for proposed new water rates as, as set forth in Resolution Number BWD 16-001.
This is, so this is not to approve the rates. This is to set the hearing?
Madam Mayor and members of the council, yes. This is to actually initiate the formal Prop 218 process. So, you're, you're, you're being requested tonight to actually adopt the water rate study, which is actually resultant from the February 16 workshop where staff was directed. After extensive review of the five alternative rates structures, we were directed to come back with a rate structure that resembles what's in your packet tonight. So, this actually kicks off the deliberative process where your rate payers then do get to voice their opinion as to the rate structure. So, with that, because the rate study actually conforms to what staff was directed to bring back, staff's recommending to proceed.
This is March. Why do we wait until May?
Uh, there is a timeframe. I know one of the time requirements is that 45, after, I'm sorry, after the adoption of the ordinance, there's 45 days required to give to the public so that the, the mailers can go out. The public has the right amount of time to actually review and, and provide a casting of the ballot. And then from that, then you conduct the public hearing and that statutory set amount of time.
And this proposal came back with the midpoint that we attempted to find, which is no increase this year in six, six and a quarter over the next five years of the next four years. But with us having the option to visit that number every year and decide if it's needed or not.
That, that is correct. It's 0% in year one and 6.25 in the subsequent four years.
And it means that we're going to delay or about $6 million of improvements from the original proposal by the consultant.
The original proposal, which would have been staff's preferred, was to actually have 6.25% across the board. And you're correct, it would have funded, that amount would have actually funded a larger capital improvement plan. I believe it would have funded about $27 million. So, this five-year plan actually funds about $6 million, less than that. Certainly, we have the ability to review as years go by to see if there's been any cost savings along the way. But to give you an example, among the capital improvement, capital improvements planned, the item we just previously approved, the design for the pumps at Amethyst and Sycamore, those are an example of projects that we're outsourcing to get started. We expect to see more of these to come. This project that we just approved and the previous item will actually start spending hard dollars on the construction in, in 2017, to give you an example.
And, and this, the proposed rates will actually do two things. They will restructure our rates and get them into conformity with current law. And while there will be some increased revenues off of this, all of our projections are that the average homeowner bill will not be affected in any significant way and that the rate increases we're looking for here are needed only to fund capital projects, not needed to fund the operation of the water district. I'm saying that so that we get those messages out as clearly as we can and we're going to have to do more of that, but, but that was clearly what we wanted to accomplish from the rate study-
Right.
-in our workshops.
Right. And staff believes that this rate structure does do that. It does conform with the ruling from San Juan Capistrano. It does have two components. It has a fixed component, which is largely a cost structure to recover the amount necessary basically to maintain the system in case there's a demand for the actual supply of water, but then also charges a consumptive rate based upon the actual cost to, to, to deliver a gallon of water.
I, I agree with the, the comments that have been made. I didn't bring the data, but it's on the record that last year, we had a capital improvements budget of some eight, nine million. We didn't do it. And in the meantime, we ended up not spending that, although we're going to spend some of it between now and June 30. And we have considerable amount of cash, plus this year, with current rates, we ended up with more cash on the income than we had expenditures. I'm not going to get into the argument about including the deferred because we have too many that's been deferred and we need to go in, but I'm also not, not going to be willing to say that we need all of this at one time. There's going to be years and years and years that, that we're going to have more or less. We need a, we need an amount of money to make sure when we have accidents that they're all covered, as long as we are going to look at this annually, as long as we're going to make sure that when we look at it, that we also open it up to the public and we make all these figures available to the public because it's awfully difficult to explain to the public when you're sitting with several millions of dollars, and I think it's 28 million, that we need to- think it's 28 million, that we need to raise the water rate. However, we're gonna do 37 or 40 million in capital, but we're not gonna do it every year. And even today with the rates, we're coming up with more money than we are expenses, and it's offset because we depreciate, which according to CAFA, but that's a paper account, we don't throw the money away or throw it out the window. And I think that it's wise that we absolutely do not change the rates this year, and I'm betting next year that if we change the rates, and we are spending it for capital, that it will not exceed 5 percent. And I think that may even be high. But we have to get to the public hearing, we have to get prepared to move on this, and so, uh, on, in that case, I'm going to, I'd like to have this sooner than May 17, but if we can't, this council, my opinion is that so many times, we're faced with, it's now or never, you gotta ask tonight, be too late if you wait till tomorrow. I've seen it, insurance, capital improvements, adopting the budget, it doesn't make any difference. I want to see this come earlier, so we have time to look at it, share it, and share it with the public, particularly, they're paying the bill. But because this does set the hearing, uh, for May 17, I want to make sure, I think we will approve this, so it sets the hearing. I said earlier, we are a team, and we have worked together carefully, and I want to make sure that at May 17, all five councilpersons are here to be a part of this, and if they can't be available, set a special hearing when they can be available, so that all five members continue to be the team, so, because we are in this together, and I think that's what the public would expect, and that's my recommendation.
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve staff's recommendation.
I'll second, if I can provide some comments. Um, I, I couldn't agree more with Mayor Pro Tim Cox on, on most of everything that he, he stated. I think all we're doing tonight is setting a hearing. It's interesting, you're not gonna hear this likely from the dais, but Shay, I think you did a great job in, in reporting on our, our most recent workshops and, and some of the nuances that go into this rate increase. Quite frankly, it's, it's hard to say you're having a rate increase, but for 90-plus percent of the, of the rate pairs, it's gonna be actual rate decrease, and I think you did an excellent job in reporting on that. But at the end of the day, most people are just gonna see a rate increase, and that's all they're gonna care about. But this does set the date, it does provide the opportunity for the public to chime in on this process. I think that that's important. I think we have capital improvement projects that we need to get completed. Last thing I want to see in this city is what's going on in the city of Los Angeles and the water main breaks and, and just the emergency, you know, response to try to fix those types of things. Our pipes are, I don't know, Brian, 50-plus years old in some cases, especially in Old Town, and obviously, we need to replace those. But this just provides the mechanism by which we can have public input, we can have that ultimate hearing in May, and I think that that, that's what we're, all we're approving here tonight. We're not approving the rate increase, we're just approving the opportunity to have that hearing and have the public provide their input. So, I think it's appropriate, and I believe the motion second's been made, if not, I'll second.
There's motion by Mr. Kennedy and, oh, excuse me.
I'm just gonna say, one of the things that I don't know that we've emphasized is the reason that we're not suggesting to the public that this be implemented this year is because we have more than enough reserve funds this year to do the work that we have scheduled for this next year.
That is right.
And, and that was an important consideration in not implementing this, this year.
Madam Mayor, if I might, I just want to be abundantly clear in, in, in the recommendation that we, that the action that you're about to take is, is actually following the recommendation, and that's to actually accept the water rate study, because among a number of the good things that this rate study does, it also, it does establish policy with respect to things like operating reserves and, and fixed capital reserves. So, it's important that we accept the study, and then we also authorize the, the mailings to begin and, and adopting the resolution. Those three need to be coincident with, with the recommendation. The concern about whether or not the, the rates actually get implemented, that's decided as a function of the 218 process through your protest vote. So, I just wanted to be clear that what we're asking for and what you're acting upon is the three recommendations listed in the item.
I, I don't know, I, yes, I agree that we, I think we all, it was unanimous for the council members that were there, that we need to establish the reserves. And the amounts that they recommended seemed reasonable. I don't think anyone had any objection to that, and that will be all a part of the whole rate structure, as I understand it.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Mr. McEckern. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed? Motion carries with Mr. Negretti absent.
Item D9. Proposed Memorandum of Understanding for Grant Administration of the...
Madam Mayor, just before they walk out the door, 'cause I know they've been sitting, I'd like to compliment our consultants for the great job they did, and Doug, your staff, and everybody who worked as hard on this thing as they have. It's just been a huge effort on everybody's part, and, and some great work.
Yes, thank you.
I'm just gonna make this easy on you, I'm gonna move for approval of D9.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McEckern, second by Mr. Cox. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed? Motion carries with Mr. Negretti absent.
Now, we move on to public comments. I do have one card.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. My name is Juan Figueroa. I am a social worker with Seasons Hospice. We're actually right down the street here in Victorville. Hospice, of course, when, when you think of hospice, you naturally think about end-of-life, death, dying. And, and you possibly have probably experienced somebody close to you, somebody that was near and dear to your heart, a loved one that you've lost, you know, passed away, and you start thinking about, about the difficulties, the sadness, the depression, the, how you missed them, and coping through your grief, and trying to get through the day again. Now, if I may ask you for a moment to just please think about all those experiences that you went through, but through the eyes of a child, and how difficult it is for that child to also go through, through their day without having either their mom or grandpa or brother or sister who have lost somebody. That's where, um, here I have some information about Camp Kangaroo and what it is, and how it helps children work through their pain of grief. And through the Seasons Hospice Foundation, it is fully covered, so that no child who actually needs it, you know, can, can attend this program without any cost to the family. And some of the program goals is to teach children what grief is and provide outlets for them to express their grief, to provide education about death and dispel myths and misunderstandings children often have about it, to provide peer support by connecting children with others within their age group who are also undergoing a similar experience, and to help children honor their loved one and begin to move forward through their grief. And they do this through many different ways, through session, different sessions and, and programs that they do. In fact, one of them is, is called Ask the Doctor, where the children have an opportunity to ask a doctor, you know, what is cancer and why it happened, or why, why was grandpa receiving dialysis? It's just different things that they might have heard during the time. And this program isn't just necessarily for children who've lost a loved one because of an illness, it's also open to children who have experienced the loss of a loved one for whatever other reason. It's, uh, specific for children who are ages five to 13 who have lost a loved one, again, whether it's a mom, dad, brother, sister, a friend at school within the last two years. And so, why I'm here is just pretty much outreach.
You have 30 seconds.
I'm sorry?
30 seconds.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'll wrap it up. I'm just here to, to spread, to do an outreach, just sharing the information, just to get the word out, so that if you do know somebody, maybe one of your constituents, or maybe you attend neighborhood meetings or groups, and you know, or have heard of somebody who, who could benefit from this, I'm just here to just share this information for them. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll, I'll hand out some, if that's okay, I'll hand out some of these.
Uh, City Manager.
I'm not gonna repeat the list of events that I did two weeks ago, but I am actually participating in an event myself this Saturday. When I signed up several months ago, it was termed the Polar Plunge, where you raise money for Special Olympics of the Inland Empire, the money stays local. I didn't realize, I'm not terribly disappointed, that it's gonna be about 70 degrees in Big Bear this weekend, but I'm sure the water will still be cold, so, any of you who have a heart for Special Olympics and those athletes, see me after the meeting, I'd be happy to take a donation. I've actually put up a challenge, I will match dollar for dollar up to 500, any donations that I receive for that event. So, don't punish me because it's not cold. Please donate.
Uh, council members?
I will repeat again, that I hope that we can get our budget process started rather quickly. We have some rumors in the community as to what fire contract and police contract are coming toward us and what it's going to mean. I do believe that these seriously need to be addressed, even if we have to expend monies in some way to reduce those contracts, because otherwise, we're gonna reach a point where 100 percent of the general fund is to public safety. It's getting more and more every year, and, you know, we, we contract, and we have individuals that work with us very clearly. But on the other hand, this is the general fund, and we have other projects, and I think we need more time than handling the budget and ask us to adopt it the same night. I'm gonna make a formal request, that we have budget study sessions where they can be presented to us, particularly police and fire, but department by department.
And is there a Nisa journey?